And I said, our first order of business today is approval of our minutes. And I asked if everyone needed a few minutes to read them.
Okay.
Thank you, thanks.
Is it? Okay, may I get a motion for the minutes to be approved?
So move.
Second.
Everyone in favors, aye?
Aye.
Aye. So the minutes are approved. Our second order of business is Dr. Trice, you're up.
All right, so thank you so much and good evening, board members. It's good to be with you again. Um, our first agenda item is um, to review proposed policy language for policy code thirty-four-ten, which is the testing and assessment program policy. Um, before we dive into the actual policy language, I, I do want to remind our community that for the better part of a year, the student success committee has played a important role in helping update board policies related to curriculum and instruction management. Because of the recommendations that the district received in our curriculum and instruction audit, uh, which uh, was finished in uh, the spring of twenty-twenty-three. And so our review of policy thirty-four-ten um, puts us back on track for this coming school year to continue to push through the audit recommendations concerning board policies. That'll be a big part of our work. Um, I just want to share my screen briefly as well because linked in the abstract is um, our uh, dashboard for tracking updates on policy. Um, can everyone see my screen, okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I, I, I'll remind the community and I need to look at an, uh, you know, another screen. Um, this uh, dashboard or this curriculum and instruction audit policy update timeline uh, is linked uh, in our agenda abstract as well as off of our district website in the academics area. Um, and this is a way that our board or our community or staff can follow along as we implement the recommendations um, for policy updates um, from our auditors. And I just wanted to briefly go over this dashboard again. Um, it's pretty self-explanatory, but you know, folks may not remember. The first column represents the criteria that auditors um, were looking for um, when they visited our district, what they were looking for in our policies. The second column represents where the administration believes that the criteria can either be updated in our policies, or in some cases, an entirely new policy may have to be uh, created. So it just gives um, our board and the community a sense of kind of where they might begin to um, look for some of this language. The third column represents the auditor's initial ratings. And so you can see here um, where I'm moving the mouse, these are two criteria that were not present in uh, our policies that needed to be updated. The two below that were partially in our policies and so it's, you get a good sense of kind of where the auditors um, landed with respect to rating our policies and uh, the work that we need to do as an administration and a board to update our policies. You will also see in the fourth column, the timeline column. In this case, the neon green uh, cells represent where the board has taken action and adopted and updated policies. If I scroll down, you'll see some areas which are blank or have not been colored in. And um, you know, these are policies that we'll get to uh, you know, this year. If you scroll further down, when you review it, you might see some cells that say twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, which means the administration anticipates getting to those um, after this year, but um, we're, we're pretty on track. Um, you know, I think, like I said, the student success committee and our policy committee has done a great job in just over a year, um, just pushing through um, the recommendations that we receive from our auditors and a, a good tool for our community to use um, uh, if they want to follow along with uh, how the administration is doing implementing uh, the recommendations. So I just wanted to, to briefly um, share that and I'm gonna stop sharing my screen. And so getting back to uh, policy code thirty-four-ten, as I said, it's the testing and assessment program policy. Um, board members in our community will notice that the administration is proposing the addition of three additional sections to this policy, section D, E, and F. Um, section D is related to um, the periodic update of our um, curriculum uh, and aligned resources and assessments uh, language that uh, really directs the superintendent to ensure that all um, test banks, benchmarks, assessments are reviewed annually to be uh, in deep alignment with uh, state and uh, local accountability systems and even national accountability systems in some cases. Um, section E really represents um, or asks the superintendent to ensure that um, that our assessment model uh, includes both formative and summative assessment measures. Uh, we do a good job of this and it also um, directs uh, later in this section, teachers to progress monitor student achievement. Um, our administration and uh, my division specifically has been hitting on this pretty hard um, the last couple of years um, where we're individualizing um, student um, progress in real time um, from week to week to week in some cases for students who uh, may not be reaching um, the level of achievement or standards that we would hope for. And the last section is section F with this, which is really related to um, determining the effectiveness of uh, instruction using data. So again, um, the primary language here is that the board directs the superintendent to ensure that data is disaggregated at various levels of our organization, including um, at the school level, classroom level, uh, student group level, which I think we're, we're all familiar with. But also the individual student level and that can be important, not only for teachers, but also for parents to see um, the progress of their students on an individual basis. And so um, we uh, believe these changes are pretty moderate. In some ways, we are um, uh, institutionalizing and putting into practice what's here in writing. Um, but it's always important when looking at board policy to kind of codify the expectation for the administration. And so um, uh, Chair Forenville, I'd be happy to answer any questions about um, the proposed language in thirty-four-ten or our dashboard document, um, which allows our community and board members and even our staff to follow along as we uh, update policies related to the curriculum and instruction audit.
I don't have any questions at this moment. Um, fellow board members, do either of you have any right now?
No, thank you.
No questions for me.
So we anticipate um, you know, pushing this to our policy committee as a next step. We'll also continue to get feedback from various teacher groups um, and also principals and that type of thing, but like I said, the language is pretty standard. Much of this we are implementing, um, but it's good that it's written as opposed to just being a part of uh, our practice. And so um, we appreciate uh, you all taking a look at it. So I think that's it for our first agenda item, uh, Chair Forenville, and we are prepared to move on.
Okay, thank you so much. I think next on our agenda is Dr. Bales.
Yes, um, and Dr. Trice, are you able to present? I'm not sure I'm able to.
Okay.
I can throw you, I can email it to you again real quick, just yeah, but.
Okay, let me see, I think I have it up here and I can present, so. I'm working on different screens I had to change today, so.
Yeah, while you're pulling up, so we'll just kind of give you guys, so um, both myself and uh, my partner Erica DeBose are gonna walk us through the curriculum management plan. Um, as y'all know, last year, we um, shared a fairly extensive document with you all. Um, you know, somewhere in the range of hundred, hundred and twenty pages um, that we were, you know, trying to really get a lot of information that we're able to share with our um, our leaders and our, our school to make sure that they're able to, you know, really understand the, you know, the background, the backbone of what we do in our instructional um, framework. So within that, um, we spent this past summer um, going through and re- really revising um, bits and pieces of it, um, tagging people in different spaces. You know, if you have access to it yourself, um, you know, there's a lot of work that's been done over the course of the summer. There's a, you know, really trying to streamline it, but then also making sure that we're updating, you know, what our focus is for this instructional school year. Um, so really with that, um, we want to make sure that we're able to highlight a couple of the things that we're focusing in on. Um, and then just to kind of give you guys some context and Dr. Trice, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but throughout the year last year, I think we had about twenty to twenty-two different hits on, on the curriculum management plan on a daily basis. So we know that our schools are accessing that on a consistent basis. I think every time we go in, we see the little icons up there and, and we've been able to guide people back to this as well. Go to the next tab. Let's get down to, um, so for this year, um, you know, at the beginning of the year at our uh, leadership uh, meeting, we wanted to make sure that we're very clear with our schools and our um, teachers eventually, when we started sharing with them, you know, really what our focus was um, throughout the year. So there's lots of different avenues and pieces that we can go through to look at, but we really want to narrow it down to looking at three particular areas in our curriculum management plan. So we're looking at our tier one and our avid strategies. I'm looking at our secondary level. Um, is how we teach. Uh, MTSS, um, we really dived into, dove into that last year, want to make sure that we're continuing that is how we support. And then continue our work with our PLCs this upcoming school year and how we collaborate. Next. Um, so with that, again, trying to make sure that we're looking at that teaching, supporting, collaborating. Um, there is also a, a, a big change in our secondary standard treatment protocol that we didn't actually put it in here because it was pretty much, we revised the entire thing, but that'll be something that y'all be able to look at. Um, and Erica will be able to go through a little bit on the elementary side, what they're able to look at. Uh, and then again, making sure that we are, you know, really combing those things together, so that instruction throughout MTSS, professional development and PLCs. Um, so with this, you know, we really wanted to be very clear um, and have our, you know, school leaders hold us accountable to make sure that we're continuing down the path of being very consistent in the messaging that we have. So I will look at the bottom here, the effective systems and strategies that we have in place. We have our tier-one instruction, our differentiated core, MTSS, PLC, student-centered coaching, IXL, iReady, goal-setting, progress monitoring, targeted support. Uh, that seems like a lot of things and there's a, a, a good chance that if you're not really aligned within the work, um, you can kind of go off in different tangents. So we've asked our school leaders to make sure that they're holding us accountable, that the work that we're doing kind of falls into those three buckets that I shared earlier. Go to the next tab. Um, so within this, looking at our, our tier-one, our MTSS and PLCs, wanted to be very clear in terms of everything that we're doing as a school district um, falls into these buckets. So our MTSS work improving our FAMAS, um, that's our um, MTSS framework at the um, school level, looking at our PLC within our solution tree. Again, continuing with our student-centered coaching, uh, making sure that our goal-setting within our new platforms are on par. Our target support looks at that co-teaching. Um, you know, looking at some core strategies through Hattie and Marzano to make sure that we know as a district, you know, we are, we can hang our hat on, you know, these particular strategies that every single teacher within every single one of our building should be able to, to do. Um, and then continue with our progress monitoring work. Again, we've asked our leaders to make sure they're holding us accountable, that this is the work that we commit to for the entire year. Um, and they're really excited to see that, you know, everything kind of fits into its own bucket. Um, some of it maybe overlaps into a couple of different ones, but it makes sense um, as we're moving forward. So at this moment, hand it over to Erica, who's gonna talk a little bit of elementary and finish us out.
Good evening, everyone. So we often talk about um, professional learning communities and this is our standard treatment protocol is really how we answer or directly align with one of the four questions. How do we respond when students are experiencing difficulty in learning? So our standard treatment protocol, but first, what is a standard treatment protocol? A standard treatment protocol is really a set of uh, consistent research-based um, strategies for students that need extra help. This involves assessing our students' needs, ensuring we are using those interventions to support our students, to meet their needs. And we're also progress monitoring our students to ensure the interventions are effective that we are using. We made some additions um, to our standard treatment protocol this year. We added a targeted strategy for vocabulary instruction. Uh, we are using Anita Archer's explicit vocabulary routine. And I would like for you to see the steps below that we're using with Anita Archer's explicit vocabulary routine. Those uh, steps include word pronunciation, word meaning, illustrating the words and examples while checking for student understanding. And making sure that we are doing that with students and making sure we're also using examples and non-examples when helpful for students. We also incorporated um, Marzano's suggested vocabulary list by grade level. And um, students will be able to use this list as well. And then we also made sure that students in grades four through five will have sis- sixteen weeks of systematic phonics intervention. And um, Tammy Edens and um, instructional coaches created this as well for students that they will be able to use for specific vocabulary instruction. And those are the changes that we made for um, our standard treatment protocol.
And Mr. Bose, can I just interrupt just quickly? Um, I'm sorry, is it all right?
You can.
And so I think it's important to kind of make connections to the previous policy that um, I started with, when it talks about the new section, I think it was section F, the use of data to um, drive one's focus on instruction. This is an example of where we're able to kind of use data uh, based on our students' uh, outcomes around vocabulary to really dictate what the district's focus needs to be uh, this coming year. And all of this is done in a way um, to uh, improve student achievement. And so we're just not kind of pulling vocabulary out of the sky and, and really wanting to focus on it um, for no apparent reason. Um, but if there's a direct connection to um, what we're seeing in our data in terms of where we need to focus some of our work. So I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Bose, I just wanted to make that quick connection between what was, you know, proposed to be written in policy uh, um, that we use data to drive our instructional work. And this is uh, an example of how we did that this summer.
No problem. Next slide. Um, and then also when students um, have been in tier-two interventions and then before they move to tier-three, we want to make sure that we use our ranking form with our interventionists. We want our teachers to sit down with our student, with our um, interventionists and look at that ranking form to help us determine how to best meet the needs for our students before moving forward. And then we look at that and we determine what is next. We determine what is next by looking at the foundational needs in grades four and five. Do we need to administer the letters, speller screening, spelling screener, the pass test, or the letter survey? Um, do we need to see if it's a comprehension need? Will we need to administer the star reading assessment or text uh, sets to teach the needed standards? Um, so we need to look at all of those things, look at the ranking form and also work with interventionists to determine the needs of our students to move forward to tier-three in ELA. And we also meet with our interventionists monthly um, to determine these and then go over data as well. Tammy Edens and myself work closely with interventionists to look at ranking forms and also looking at strategies to help them meet the needs of our students that are in tier-three as well. Next slide. Updates for math. So in math, we are using a new approach. Uh, this is our CRA approach. Um, concrete representational abstract. What is this? So I put down a a, just a anchor chart for you so that you could see exactly what this means. Um, this is, you're using physical objects to solve math problems. You are drawing to solve math problems. And you are also solving math problems with numbers. So this is what we're using this approach for students to make sure that we're using different strategies to make sure they understand different things in math. Um, and I just wanted to make sure that we use this because we use so many different acronyms. And I know as a parent and sometimes as people who are not educators, we want to make sure that we understand things that we are talking about as we are explaining them. Um, also, what's different this year is we are using iReady in our math instruction, forty-five, forty-five to sixty minutes per week. Um, that's in small groups also, as well as individual. So we are using iReady instruction in our math um, lessons each week with teachers. Next slide. So tier-three, we're really excited about this. We have bridges. Um, this is a new resource that we are using um, in math, and this is for tier-three. Um, all interventionists did have a professional learning during our um, teaching and learning conference last week. It was really exciting to sit there and listen and be involved in professional learning. Myself and Noah and also Tammy, we were involved in that with our interventionist. And students will be able to use manipulatives. The, the tier-three resource will meet students where they are. This is a strength-based approach for our tier-three students. K-six interventionists will be able to use this for tier-three students, and this is for math. This is a tier-three approach for math, and this is essential um, skills for students to close the gaps for our math students. So we will be using this and our K-six interventionists will be involved with this this year and beyond, we hope. So we're excited about this tier-three resource for students.
And just so that um, our community members are clear what we mean by tier-three. Um, so these are students who have not responded to um, universal core instruction or the core instruction that all students receive. Um, they haven't necessarily responded well to the interventions if they experience um, challenges with the universal core instruction. And so tier-three is just another layer of support um, that we're providing um, students. Um, you know, so that, you know, we're doing all that we can to, to progress monitor uh, their achievement. Um, and the reason that this is um, exciting for us is because, again, here we have an opportunity to provide not only professional development, but uh, universal resources that are used across uh, grade levels um, to help uh, progress monitor uh, and intervene for students who um, are at tier-three or who need the most intensive support. Um, again, this is, this is um, um, the first time that we're doing this as a district and so um, teachers were quite excited uh, last week at our teaching and learning conference. Thank you, Doc. Dr. DeBose.
And it also is targeted instruction for students. Um, and I want to just say again, um.
I'm sorry, did I move, did I move too soon?
No, you're fine. You can, you can, you can go there. But I always say too, and I, I said this in the teaching and learning conference, and we also want to make sure that we remember to say it's not programs, it's people. We want to make sure that we're consistent with saying that and just making sure that we're inspecting what we expect with our, you know, data and looking at not just the programs or our people and the professional learning that we're providing for them. They were so excited about the new program. And we will be continuing, you know, just to make sure that with the targeted instruction, we are continuing to provide everything that we need for our students with this program. So we are so excited about it because it's targeted interventions, but it's also not just the program, but it provides materials and the images for students and the manipulatives for the students. And the materials are already at the schools and they were so excited, just like Dr. Trice said, the teachers, the interventions were excited about just everything that we'll be getting for all the elementary schools and the K-six interventionists that will be able to provide um, this instruction for students. But, yeah, you can go on, Dr. Trice, to the next slide.
All right, I think I want to say one more thing. I'm sorry to be jumping in like this, but I think it's important kind of given our um, um, you know, financial issues that we're having uh, as a district. Um, you know, these are um, uh, resources that are uh, consuming a, a large uh, part of our budget. And I want to just publicly thank um, Dr. Bales and Mr. Bose for, for kind of working with our vendors uh, to get the best pricing on um, resources that we know our students uh, need. And, and you know, that was not an easy task, especially in this environment. Um, but uh, it's critically important that we progress monitor student achievement. It's critically important that irrespective of the budget situation we find ourselves in, teachers still divert, deserve meaningful professional learning um, that directly impacts uh, student achievement. And so I want to just be sure that, to remain unapologetic about that, that we're gonna continue to pursue all strategies that we can that directly and positively impact uh, the classroom. And again, the professional learning, these tier-three resources for our most needy students. Uh, we're unapologetic about it, uh, but at the same time, both Dr. Bales and Mr. Bose have worked very hard to kind of bring our uh, partners uh, who are vendors in a place where we can afford these things uh, for our students. So just wanted to publicly acknowledge that as well.
You can go back to the other slide, Dr. Trice.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, you're fine.
In the wrong way.
So the MTSS key focus areas in data. Um, this is our FAMAS, the facilitated assessment of MTSS. So the areas, we're gonna go back to the twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four data. So we focused on leadership and then focused on instruction and intervention. So we want to go over some data that um, we provided in these slides. In the leadership category from twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four, elementary schools grew um, sixty percent um, from implemented, and this is in the leadership ca- category, sixty percent to seventy-six percent. And the facilitated assessment of MTSS, this is when we go around and we talk about the areas that we grew in, in MTSS, MTSS in the school level. We have the FAMS and the FAMD. So the FAMS is the school level, the FAMD is the district level. So we go around and talk to the schools at the school level and they participated in this, and then they talk about the leadership area and then the instruction intervention area. So we grew from sixty percent to seventy-six percent. And then the middle schools grew from forty-five percent to sixty-one percent. The high schools grew from forty-three percent to sixty-seven percent. And then if you look at the instruction and intervention area, in the instruction and intervention category from twenty-three to twenty-four, elementary schools were at seventy percent implementation. Middle schools were at fifty-one percent implementation. And high schools were at forty-eight percent implementation. And I think, you know, as you look at these numbers, that is something that will continue to grow in, but that is something that we, you know, we, and I, I don't know if I, I want um, Dr. Trice and Dr. Bales as well. We, you know, something to celebrate about in those areas of growth, um, as well as we will continue to, you know, have our focus areas and will continue to grow in these areas as well, so.
And I, I would also say um, the MTSS or multi-tier systems of support um, is the school improvement model in North Carolina. And uh, within the MTSS framework, there are a number of criteria that the state kind of highlights that schools and districts need to implement uh, to be sure that they're on the right track um, to increase student achievement. Uh, progress monitoring, for instance, is one of those criteria. And so um, I, I am happy to see us getting better in the leadership of MTSS. Um, uh, the board may remember um, that that's part of our instructional focus that we introduced with the curriculum and instruction management plan last year. Um, those increases are not documented by us as, as a staff, as an administration. Those increases are actually um, uh, documented and um, and, um, verified by the department of public instruction after, um, you know, training and and, um, facilitation of, of meetings. Um, with respect to our instructional focus last year, we'll continue that this year and, um, we want to get better, but that's what the curriculum and instruction audit called for us, uh, for us to get better in these areas. So I think there's a lot to be excited about. Our principals and school leaders, other school leaders are excited. And so, um, we'll continue to grow.
And then this is just a visual so that you can see, um, our program updates and the programs that we have in both elementary and secondary. So you can see, of course, we have in class that has not changed, um, for K three. We have K five reading, which is star, that has not changed. Um, we have K five, um, I ready and that is in math. Um, and then we have our tier three bridges. And then, um, in secondary, we have our six, eight math and reading IXL. Um, six, eight tier three math, um, bridges and math one to three and English nine, eleven IXL. So just a visual so that you can see, um, program updates, um, for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
And that's it with that, um, section or the update of to the curriculum and instruction management plan. Uh, we'd be happy to answer any questions concerning, uh, the curriculum and instruction management plan. Uh, highlights or updates, um, before we move on to the last agenda topic.
Any questions?
I don't have any right now. Thank you.
No, I don't have any at this time, but obviously I'll, I'll review the presentation more in detail. Thank you. This is a lot.
I think I, I have the same mindset as well as that I will probably have to look at it a little more in detail and I reserve that, that question for a later time.
So we're, yeah, board members, you can expect to see this, um, agenda topic on the, what is it? The September fifth, um, agenda and we'll be sure that our abstract is, um, extensive and kind of goes further. It's kind of hard to get it from a slide deck, but you know what some of these changes mean, um, in, in wording, um, as well as the link to the overall curriculum and instruction management plan. So we'll be happy to kind of dive into it. I think it is going to be on this discussion and action with a, a brief presentation as well.
You know, Dr. Tri, I just thought about, I, I actually do have a question. I think, I think the acronym was the CRA. Um, that regarding the math that was right, this, the CRA approach at tier two. And this is so for the lower level kids, correct?
When, this is for, for all students, um, in terms of the approach. So all students, uh, receive tier one instruction. Some students may not respond to universal tier one instruction. So they'll kind of get an intervention. And so all students are, um, can receive the intervention. So um, there is no kind of criteria that we're going to establish other than uh, students who may not, for whatever reason, be responding to tier one instruction. Um, but also the CRA approach where things are more concrete, representational or abstract, kind of using formulas. You know, all students need to be able to approach math in this way. And so we're excited about, excited about it.
So yeah, I guess so. My question to that is, so this particular approach is kind of going back to basics, the way initial math was taught once upon a time anyway.
Yeah.
Yes.
Blocks on the floor and the chalkboard with the chalk. Okay. I got you.
Yeah, exactly right. Yep.
And so in some ways that kind of gets away from like, um, technology in some ways, you know, sometimes it's great to see manipulatives or abstract things on a screen. Um, but it's also nice and instructive to be able to kind of use your hands and manipulate represent things differently as well. So I think it's a healthy balance, um, that's needed.
I got you. So if you throw down the pieces of chalk or crayons and you can separate it out, I'm with you in the circle. Even promote some kindness kind of going on to share. Johnny can share four of his crayons if he had eight. He has four left. I'm with you.
Because a- all kids learn in different ways and need to see things differently. And I think this is a, a, a great approach to, to doing that. So.
I think so too. Thank you.
So, um, Chair Formville, if it's okay, we'll move on to our last topic if there are no, no more questions, but to confirm to the board members, um, the curriculum instruction management plan will be on the September fifth agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Uh, so we're going to dive a little bit into our, um, high school schedule, next steps. Uh, go to the next slide, please. Um, so I'm going to kind of just start off with, you know, last time, um, we met as a board and, you know, ha- we voted on the high school schedule assessment um, to move to the four by four block in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. I'm just kind of giving you an idea of what the summer work has kind of looked like. Um, and then we'll be able to go a little bit deeper into what, um, it looks like to start off the year. So uh, each one of the schools had an opportunity for teachers to meet with their own staff to discuss, um, next steps. Um, you know, some places that they may need support. And this was actually kind of like a grassroots movement, um, from the individual school. So each school had, you know, representatives from their school and, you know, sometimes they may have had someone from another school, um, come over as well. And they met just teacher to teacher to talk about, you know, where they were at, what are some of the things that they needed, um, and shared that information, uh, with us that we were able to really utilize. One of the things that we didn't necessarily want to do was jump in during the summer and ask teachers to come in when they're not on paid time to, you know, give feedback. Um, you know, as teachers are not available, man, because they're working second jobs and they're doing on vacations and so it's, um, we want to make sure that we, you know, had a, an equal level of opportunity for our teachers to kind of gather. So I'm glad that they were able to do that. I met with the, um, people that kind of led those conversations, probably mid-June, late-June. Um, and got a lot of really great feedback that helped us kind of decide where we're moving from there. Um, so from there is really looking at that feedback and, you know, there's three main things that rose to, um, the top and one of them we've already addressed. Um, you know, I know we're talking about block schedules, but in all honesty, each one of the schools, um, really talked about like, how are we going to, you know, keep kids engaged, um, for that long a time? So just a couple of, you know, things that we could put in place, you know, here are things that were helpful. So we talked about the cell phone policy, which I know we voted on during our last board meeting. Um, bouncing around to some of our high schools, the last couple of days, like there's a big smile on teachers faces. Like, look, they're all paying attention and they're all, you know, doing what they're supposed to be doing. So I know that that's been um, really helpful these first couple of days. Um, a couple of other things that kind of popped up are, are classroom management opportunities and not management in terms of like, you know, this kid, you know, I need just to figure out how to work with them for ninety minutes, but like, what are different engagement strategies? And what are things that I can do with students to make sure that during that, you know, longer extended time period, I'm actually able to navigate and work with them. You know, looking at our tier one and our differentiated core and some of the tier two stuff that we talked about. How do I, you know, engage my students and give them, you know, being able to manage my classroom during that time? Um, and then the last one was really just a, a conversation of just needing time to wrap their heads around, how does this work in a different setting? Um, it wasn't necessarily a piece of like, I, I don't know what to do. It's really just, okay, I need to change my mindset of, okay, I had kids for fifty minutes and I'm going to have them for eighty-five minutes. Um, and, and that may be different in different classes. It may be, you know, a math class, you've got to think of it differently. And we're a social studies class, you, you know, maybe said, oh gosh, I'm really excited to have this. Um, so really for them, I was being able to look at their, um, PLC time and be able to dedicate some of that time as we move, uh, throughout the year this year. Um, since then, we've collaborated with principals and our counseling staffs to really start thinking of that timeline and what needs to be done by when. So example, that is, you know, we can't wait until April to really decide, you know, what courses may be partnered up. Um, what courses we need to navigate because we have to have that in place by December. So we can start the registration process in January. Um, and then really looking at, um, sharing, you know, what are some things that, you know, we're already doing um, and looking at in terms of our professional development and how can we use that as the lens that we're providing professional development for, um, as we go into, um, looking at things. So if we look at and, you know, you'll see in subsequent slides, if we look at our MTSS work and what we're doing there, how do we really navigate that to, you know, say, how do we do MTSS on a block? What does it really look like? What does tier two look like? Those are the things when we look at teacher working condition surveys. The teacher said that they need more time in class. They need to know how to differentiate. And, you know, we want to be able to combine that. So it's one, useful for this year as well, but being able to prepare them for next year. Um, and then next steps for us, um, like I said, just working together, um, to make sure that we're getting those key decision points in place. And we had lots of conversations around AP, around Avid, around support courses. Um, and really wanting to make sure that this first quarter, we're really diving into that. Um, again, like I said, I wanted to make sure that we, you know, valued every teacher's voice and didn't say, well, if you were around during the summer, we got your voice. Next slide, please.
And just as a point of clarification, Dr. Bells, uh, we didn't adopt a cell phone policy. I think it was discussed. Uh, each school is, I, I think, um, kind of trying out, you know, their, their approach. So just want to, want to clarify.
Thank you. I just want to draw our attention to this. So this is actually from our curriculum instruction management plan. And something that we're really going to lean into this year, you know, these are the things that we're saying, you know, our, you know, it's the NC Santa course of study, the portrait of the graduate, all of these things. What do students do? What do educators do? Uh, so when we're looking at this, we're really leaning into what are the edu-